This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for July 19th, 2021. The city council meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format with the ability of the public, for the public to connect virtually using the following go-to-meeting access information. If you want to call in, it's 1-408-650-3123, and the access code is 424-710-005. And of course, you can also email any comments that you may have before the meeting. We have roll call, please.
Mayor David Brummel.
Speaking. Here, too.
Alderman Stewart Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Chrisell.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Notice was received by a member of the public body in accordance with the city council's electronic attendance policy, and the member will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the member's electronic attendance is made. Do we have a motion such as that? Seeing none, I declare that Alderman Anderson is present for this meeting. Okay? Would you like to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We couldn't do this job without our volunteers. Fortunately, we have faithful volunteers that sign up for a long period of time, but sometimes they have to move on to other things, and we have to say thank you and allow them to do that in the hopes they'll have good memories and come back sometime in the future for something else. So we have two people tonight we would like to recognize. I see Kate Perkins is here. Kate, would you come up, please? And Jerry Suguru, I do not see. We're still going to recognize the fact that he has been a faithful member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. So Kate, here's your portfolio.
Okay.
Kate served the city for nearly seven years with the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. During Kate's time serving Warrenville and promoting bicycling and walking in our community, Warrenville was recognized twice as a bike-friendly city by the League of American Bicycleists. She also helped start the Bike Walk to School Day in Warrenville and helped plan and run the Bike Rodeo and BPAC's participation in National Night Out. She also gave input on many pro-biking and walking city plans and proposals. Kate's passion for serving the community and improving bike and pedestrian experiences and safety in the community has shown, and the city thanks her for all her efforts and time on the commission, and I personally thank you, Kate, so much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
This is for you, for your home office wall.
Okay. Thank you.
Please.
I would like to thank, I would like to thank the council and the city for this recognition. It was my pleasure to serve, and it's all the kind things you've said. Thank you. I know that I am probably preaching to the choir when I say this, but if you have a chance to serve your community, or if you're asked to serve your community, and you can say yes, please say yes. Many adventures can await you, and personally, it's very gratifying to me to bike around this beautiful city and see all the paths and all the new development that I was able to look at during my time on BPAC. Thank you very much.
We'll see you out on the trails. I'd also like to recognize Jerry Suguru, who is not present this evening, couldn't be here, but Jerry, he has a new commitment that interferes with him being able to attend the evening meetings, but should be all, we have to recognize the fact that he has made enormous efforts on BPAC. He's been there since it was established in 2006. That's a long commitment. In that time, he has been part of developing and implementing the Bike Rodeo for 15 successful years. Like Kate, during his time, Warrenville has been recognized twice as a bike-friendly city by the League of American Bicycleists. He's also been part of giving input on many biking and walking city plans and proposals. So Jerry, wherever you are, thank you so much. Come back whenever you like. We'd be glad to have you again. Okay, this evening, we have a presentation by our developer, Elite Ambulance. If you'd like to come up to the podium, identify yourselves and give us your story, as John Davis would say. I think that mic is not on.
Oh, all right, sorry.
There we go.
My name is Jeff Graefen. I'm the developer for the Elite Ambulance site at 3S 140 Talbot Street. And I also have George Heineck, who's on the management team, who can speak to the operational function of the ambulance. So I was going to give a brief overview of the building, and then I can answer any questions relative to the building and the site, and Mr. Heineck can answer any questions relative to the operational standpoint. What we have is a 23,500-square-foot building on 2.53 acres. It includes 67 parking spaces. We have agreed to do some street improvements outside on the right-of-way. We have been to the Plan Commission and was asked to revise some of the elevations to make it be a little bit more architectural-friendly. We've accommodated those requests and revised our drawings. We feel this is a great community, the owner of Elite wants to invest in the community. We are investing around $3 million onto this site to show our commitment to the community. And I can answer any questions relative to the site, and if there's any questions relative to the operation, I know there are some questions for traffic flow, Mr. Heineck can answer that, so I'll open it up for discussion.
Okay. Any questions about the site from the council? Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, can you talk just a little bit more about the landscaping and the timing of the construction?
Well, we'd like to start the construction as soon as the permitting is approved, so we have to finish the drawings to pass the plan review process, and we have a set of, we have issued a full-blown landscape plan that has, meets the ordinances for the landscape. We feel that we've accommodated all the requirements for the landscaping on this site.
Okay. Anyone else? Very good, thank you. Proceed.
That's all, that's all I have for the building. If you have any operational questions, I'll open it up, or I'll have Mr. Heineck describe the operation to you.
I think that would be good, maybe a short description of what's going on. Alderman Ashauer?
I'm sorry, I just have one very important point of interest. The, there's a letter that shows a commitment to keep all the commercial vehicles out of the residential area that's adjacent to the industrial park, and if that can be memorialized in some way in the recommendations from the Plan and Commission, I think it would be of value. And certainly, you gentlemen would have a big influence to make sure that that happens. So I would appreciate a strong commitment on that.
I would, I personally would have a daily commitment to that, being one of the managers. It would be an issue of training, looking at the map and, you know, surveying the area. I don't see that as a normal pathway for one of our ambulances. We do a much different type work than the fire department. We do not go out, run a call.
A little closer to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Our ambulances will not be going out, running a call, and then returning to this location. Our ambulances are staffed, and they're out, out and about for the next 12 hours or so, 12 or 10 hours, depending on the length of the shift. They will not be in the area.
Thank you.
And when they come and go, it's not going to be sirens and all that? They're going out to a particular place?
Our business model is much different. Only about 50% of our calls are run on an emergency-type basis. We do a lot more transfer work, so that cuts the calls in half right there. And then again, in general, our ambulances are being sent by our dispatchers from that location to post an area outside of that station before we even run our first call.
Okay. Any questions for him? All right. I guess that's enough. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Appreciate your coming.
Thanks for having us.
You bet. Okay, we'll move on to the part of our meeting that we save for citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. In this issue of the Warrenville Digest, in February of 2001, it goes over the state of the city for 2000. The interesting point on this is there's $150,000 granted to the city, the police, the fire, and the park district from coming in Randy Holtegrin, not as a congressman, but from the state of Illinois when he was elected for state office. The year 2000, at the state of the city, saw $4 million of TIF money generated, $2 million to the developer, $2 million to the city. The $2 million to the city could be completely spent according to the statute because there were no debt for the city on Cantera. The water, tanks, the wells, all the utility, everything was financed by the developer. The developer received the $2 million in payback for the excavating, the utilities, and the development on the site. But in 1993, it was Amical and LaSalle Partners that wanted 90% of the TIF money. Back in 1993, the city of Warrenville had two management employees, first city administrator, Jim Connors, and a finance director. But we had a plan to demonstrate to Amical Oil and LaSalle Partners that it would be financially better for them to spend 50/50 on the TIF revenue, and they would financially benefit. What we did was we added 8% to the notes that they were to receive. This meant in nine years, the principal would double. This gave a tremendous incentive to Amical Development and LaSalle Partners to build buildings, to sell more property to other developers, because they could then gain additional funds, increasing tremendously their revenue, and by doing this earlier, they would increase their rate of return. They also, with our negotiations, donated $1.5 million in cash to the city. When the city of Warrenville received this negotiated benefit, the city would then receive funds from TIF quicker, in a greater quantity of funds within the preceding years. This totaled to more than $40 million to the city of Warrenville, which were available then, within restrictions, to the fire district, the library district, the park district, the school district, and the city. In the area that was considered TIF II, the roads were rebuilt, stormwater drainage was installed, all at no cost to the taxpayers. Unfortunately, the, what was occurring by the previous councils has not been duplicated, and there are additional costs to the taxpayers with the current TIFs. And for the record, as a Ward 1 resident and previous alderman, I believe that if an alderman is unable to physically attend the meetings, he should resign.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment this evening who didn't sign up? Seeing none, we'll move on then to official and staff comments. I have one thing, just a reminder that National Night Out is coming up on Tuesday, August 3rd. It should be another very successful event. A total of 56 vendors have already been secured, including face painters, music DJ, and a musician, and it's always a lot of fun, so put that on your calendar, Tuesday, August 3rd, in the evening. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
I have nothing.
Very good, thank you. Alderman, anybody with comments? Alderman Widener?
Yes, it's great to hear Mr. Seibert talk about the positive TIF that occurred a while back. It certainly had its benefits, and I'm sure the ones that we're involved with now will have benefits in the future. And I also wanted to say I welcome Alderman Anderson's presence online. I've always found his input and his suggestions to be very good and worthwhile, and I think as we move forward, embracing the technologies that are available are important to embrace, and I think it allows us to move along with our, with our business in a very beneficial way, and I don't think we skip a beat if someone is attending remotely. I also wanted to thank Chairs Suguru and Perkins for their seven years, 15 years, 15 years in Jerry's, Mr. Suguru's case. They provided a lot of leadership and activism to the BPAC, and besides the things that you mentioned, Mayor, and your accolades, you know, the bike-friendly community that the cities received twice, we were the smallest community to receive that in the state of Illinois, so there was a lot of work that went into that, along with the Bike Rodeos. I know when we see kids riding their bikes with the helmets that have been provided by Northwestern's foundations, it was that partnership that was instrumented by the leaders on the BPAC that helped create that. When you see kids now riding bikes with lights and bells on and everything like that, you can thank the giveaways that were provided by the council's budget and also by the suggestions of the BPAC leadership and members. We all, the group also, under their leadership, worked hard to lower the speed limit on Route 59. That's no easy task. They're responsible for improving a lot of street crossings to make them safer so that our town is better connected with trails and walkways, and we saw the increase in use on our bikes, bikeways, and trails during the pandemic, and it was very important that we had established those safer connections. There's still more work to do, and I look forward to seeing safer street crossings and more trail extensions, but this group of leaders really laid the groundwork for that to happen with the bikeway implementation plan development and the sidewalk priority plan. So Mr. Suguru and Ms. Perkins, thank you for your, your leadership and your involvement with Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Thank you.
And of course, Kate rode her bike here tonight. Anyone else with a comment or question tonight? Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I just want to second what Bill said about electronic attendance. I think as we, you know, move forward into a slightly more digital version of the city council, hopefully paperless packets in the near future, that we all just need to get a little bit adjusted to some change. And I know change isn't easy, and a lot of people don't like change, but after all of this time, you know, working on the city council this past year-plus through the digital platform, I think we've seen that it works, and it, it can still produce good results, good decisions. It makes conversation a lot more awkward. I think we all understand that. It's not the system that we're used to, but as, as we move forward, if Alderman Anderson is going to be present digitally, we will figure that out, and he will be able to make comments when he wishes to, and I'm sure will contribute very positively, and it will be fine. We will get through this. Change is okay. We can deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. We have some information on the dais that is laminated, and I would just like to say thank you. We talked about this last week, and this is wonderful. This is exactly what we asked for, and I know that I'm, I appreciate this information so that we all know what we're doing when we make a motion or need to do something that maybe isn't typically what we do. So I just appreciate the clarity. And I would also like to comment on what Alderman Goodman and Alderman Widener said, but in another venue, not about accepting change, but about following rules. Since I've been an alderman and way before, when I was out there with you guys, people could attend electronically for medical reasons and business reasons, and that has been longstanding, our policies, for a long time. So basically, we are following the policy, and I think it would be very wrong not to follow a policy that we voted up. So it's just another look at this situation, that this is not an exception to the rule. This is our rules. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Anderson, anything to add?
Well, I appreciate the, my fellow aldermen. I will say I'm, I am in every week to pick up my packets and see folks, if I see them at City Hall, and review and send all my questions and discussions, so very actively engaged, but I appreciate everybody's support and that the world today allows something like this to be able to work effectively. I still will work hard to find days where I'm able to alter a schedule and be there in person, too, because I do enjoy the camaraderie that is the city council and the city of Warrenville. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay. City Administrator?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. And city attorney, good evening, Brooke.
Good evening, Mayor. I have no report.
Okay. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Certainly. Thank you. Move to approve the agenda for the July 19th, 2021 city council regular meeting.
Second. A motion and a second discussion. Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to remove item 6B from the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, 6B?
The motioner agrees.
Seconder agree?
Yes.
Okay, motioner seconder agree. Any other discussion or questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved as amended this evening. We need a couple sets of minutes approved also. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the July 6th, 2021 city council regular meeting and to approve the minutes of the July 12th, 2021 Community Development Committee meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Again, any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Wave Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-29, Conditionally Approving a Preliminary Planned Unit Development Special Use Permit, Variations and Exceptions from the Warrenville Zoning Ordinance and Stormwater Management and Floodplain Ordinance for an Elite Ambulance Station at 3 South 140 Talbot Avenue. C, Accept the Community Development Committee Recommendation, Wave Second Reading and Pass Ordinance 02021-31, Approving a Carnival Permit for the VFW Property, 3 South 371 Main Street, Subject to Conditions and Requirements Outlined in the Community Development Department Staff Memo dated July 6th, 2021. D, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2021-49, Approving the Change Order with Engineering Resource Associates, Inc., for Final Phase II Engineering Redesign of the Trailhead Project in the Amount of $31,416. E, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and Approve the Preferred Illinois Prairie Path Trailhead Redesign Option, as Described in Senior Civil Engineer Hawkins' Memo dated July 1st, 2021. F, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation, Direct Staff to Prepare an Amended Authorized Strength Ordinance to Reflect the Staffing of a New Assistant Community Development Director, Physician, in lieu of Refilling the Existing Vacant Senior Planner Position and Finalize a Proposed Salary Range for the New Position. G, Accept Mayor Brummel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Ann Behrens as City Treasurer until the Unexpired Term ends April 30th, 2023, and Following the Results of the Next Consolidated Election in 2023. H, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and Designate Alderman Goodman to Serve as Council Liaison to Assist Staff with Updating the Ward Boundaries to Reflect the Population Changes Based on 2020 Census Data. I, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Held, a meeting held on July 8th, 2021. J, Receive and File Reported Invoices Paid Up to July 14th, 2021, in the Amount of K, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due Honor Before August 2nd, 2021, in the Amount of $140,741.57. And L, Receive and File Report of Master Debit Card Expenditures for the Month of June 2021, in the Amount of $10,487.21.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Motion carries. The consent agenda as amended has been approved. We will return not item 6B. Alderman Goodman, did you wish to make that motion or have someone else do it? else do it? Okay. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Plan Commission recommendation, wave second reading, and pass ordinance O2021-30, approving a temporary use permit for a one-day Evillet Eve Wine Shop business anniversary event on Stafford Place right-of-way.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Discussion. Alderman Goodman, did you wish to comment?
Yes, I have concerns based on the history of this business and statements by this business owner at prior meetings of this council about whether this event or other activities conducted by this business will be conducted with public safety in mind during this pandemic or in accordance with our laws. So given those concerns, I cannot in good conscience support this proposal.
Okay. Anyone else with a commenter question? Very good. We have a roll call. Oh, Alderman Berry? No? Okay.
I did make a comment, or I asked a question last week about informing the other businesses in the neighborhood. I know that I ran a retail business for 25 years. I was in a strip shopping center, many locations. If somebody closed the street in front of my store, I'd be bent. And without notice. I'm not saying that I would be upset, but I would just like to be notified. And it doesn't appear that that has happened here. It's a little too late to do that now, I guess, but I think I would like the staff to look into when something like this happens again, and it's not in a residential neighborhood, that we actually look into a way to have the business contact the other business owners regarding what they intend to do. So I think that's something that the staff needs to look into.
Okay. Alderman Goodman, additional comment?
Just to follow up with that, you know, Summer Days, for example, has an awful lot more residents near where our event is being held. And so notification of those residents has been a high priority for the Summer Days Committee. I think these notices are even being hand-delivered by Park District staff. So it's not just in commercial areas where notices for events like this and street closures are very important. It's certainly important for residential areas as well.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Community and Economic Development Director, Ron Mensah. Ron?
I did want to call attention to Section 3J of the ordinance. There is a requirement that the applicant notify the building owner and all the tenants in the building at least a week in advance of the event, of the, you know, the scope and plan, how the event's going to be conducted, and the restrictions that will be imposed as it relates to the use of the public parking in the street out front. So there is some notification that will be, I would assume, hand-delivered, since they're all in the same building, to the different folks that live and work in that building.
Thank you, Ron, for that clarification. Alderman Berry?
I understand that you're going to do this one week in advance, but this is, you know, this request came in longer than one week in advance. I mean, I think this information should have been in here, that those tenants and those businesses were informed at the time that they were going to make application to close the street, and that that information should have been given to us, letting us know that those residents and tenants agreed to this. I'm not saying that every resident and every tenant is going to agree. I'm just saying they need to be informed. That's all I'm asking for.
Anyone else? Seeing none. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the regular agenda. It says FY 2022 financial update and discussion, but then in parentheses postponed. So is this because it was postponed in the past, and we're now looking at it?
No. This, the report that was planned to be presented tonight has been postponed due to the work level on the finance folks that have to put that report together. It will be, we did note in the summary, it will be presented next week at the Public Safety and Finance Committee Agenda. And in fact, Kevin and I have our monthly one-to-one meeting tomorrow. We'll be even discussing more fine details about how that will appear and the frequency and the type of information. Just for example, as you know, we're past the fiscal year that was most dramatically impacted, I don't want to say past COVID, that's not true, by the pandemic, but we're trying to figure out how to make it more meaningful even than it was during that process. So it was postponed a week. It just wasn't timely in terms -- there aren't enough hands in finance to get everything done, plus all the extras right now, to put it in plain language. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for John on that? Otherwise, we'll expect it as proposed. Very good. Alderman Davalos?
I don't know if this is the right time. I just wanted to make a comment welcoming our, now that we've voted, our new city treasurer, and say thank you. And reading the resume was wonderful. She's very well qualified. I'm excited we have somebody that's so qualified. And I just want to say welcome and looking forward to working with her. So I think this is a wonderful thing that happened to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anne wanted to be with us tonight, but she had a business commitment that she couldn't put off, so she'll see us next time around. But she did want to be here to introduce herself. Okay, we are done with the regular agenda. I see nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business, no closed session required this evening. Who would like to make the motion to adjourn? Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and your attention this evening. We'll see you next time.